You're cheap enough, you just shut up.
Yeah.
It's just me and Grant. Yo, I'm beginning to play.
No, there's gonna be like forty people artists. Just for people who are like, there's not a lot of it.
Well, we're here.
This will just be like, this will be like.
Wait, I'm just.
I was used.
No.
Four people.
Four.
Randy. I didn't see her. Steve, I think he was.
We just. No.
Oh, on the portal?
Yeah.
Yeah. I hope you will be able to see the events. If you're logging in as on the thing. They could send your handles.
Other than you like. About that. Give them a check when you were online.
Actually, I think the sending one. If you want to see what members.
Hi. Busy place here.
Everybody tuning in from home?
You guys, that's what I would do.
I, I consider this so. Was leaving. What I.
Well, which should be, it should be. Apparently just review. See how the reasons why.
That's good.
All right.
Give it the next twenty-five seconds. Are you ready? Okay, ready? All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Waiting on you. All right, so for those of you who don't know, I'm Cara Bullerman, I'm the city attorney. And just in case you're in the wrong place, this is the Sunshine Law's training. So we are going to talk about open meetings and open records. And this should be a little bit more concise than the last time we did this. For those of you who are here, I think it was four years ago that we did an in-person. Just thank you COVID. But we tried to do this pretty regularly. Now that I'm in-house, I'm hoping we can do an annual refresher. It used to be more like every two to three years again, thanks COVID. But we'll go ahead and get started. And we are still going to base this off of the PowerPoint presentation that was put out by the Iowa Public Information Board in 2016. There have been a few changes and updates. I also, we're gonna skip over some of their slides about history and fancy quotes from Thomas Jefferson. If you really wanna see those, I can get them to you later. But basically, those lead up to the conclusion that openness is important. So. But we'll go ahead and jump right in. This is really just going to be a basic overview. And we're gonna start with the open meetings part of it. So this is really going to be important for those of you who are council members, who attend council meetings. And for our board and commission chairs, co-chairs, and our staff liaisons. The first thing to remember is what is and what is not a government body. So yes, it's very obvious that council is. What else? Well, any of our boards and commissions that make, influence, or recommend policy. So that would apply to every one of our formal boards and commissions. It would also apply to some of our ad hoc commissions and some of our task force. So if you've ever been part of any of those meetings, you'll notice we do the formal procedure. We have an agenda, we take minutes, things like that. If you are part of a meeting and you're not really sure, or if you're. Preferably, you ask me before the meeting. But if you're part of a committee or a commission and you're not really sure if it applies to you, you can always reach out to me. And I'm more than happy to talk you through that. A lot of times I know about those as they're being formed, so I can provide an opinion then. But sometimes we do things very quickly. So if you're not sure, feel free to reach out. Sorry, a lot of these other ones are. Rachel, what am I doing wrong? Oh, it's going through all the bullet points. We're not gonna do that because we are not a nonprofit, we're not a board of regents, all that stuff. So the definition doesn't apply to all task forces and subcommittees. And that's kind of what I was touching on. So if the main body is covered by law and there's quorum, that type of thing is probably going to be. It's probably going to be covered. So we have some subcommittees where we do not have a quorum of the members of the main body. We have a council subcommittee. It does not include a quorum, so that is not covered. If we had four members, that would be a quorum, we would have to follow the open records procedures. Then there, it just kind of runs through here that policymaking is more than just recommending or advising what's done. It's kind of deciding with authority, taking a course of action, but also making those recommendations. If it's part of your scope of duty of your board or commission or your group that you're working with to develop and make those recommendations, then that would be covered by chapter twenty-one, and you would have to follow those procedures. Now, one thing that it does not cover is if we are having an internal staff meeting, things like that. That is not covered, we don't have to follow open records. That would be a severe inhibitor to day-to-day operations of the city. If we had to make and follow parliamentary procedure for every single meeting we had. And this just kind of goes through some of the things I already said, that some of the boards, commissions, task force committees, they may not be required to follow the procedure, but there's no rule that you can't do that. And the Iowa Public Information Board will always say that the best practices are to follow the rules because always opt to go in favor of openness. That is part of their mission. So on the flip side, sometimes we have particular things that we have reasons for not following those procedures. Number one, efficiency. But also, we'll get into this, there's some closed sessions, there's certain confidential things, certain departments deal with information that is almost entirely confidential. So we have reasons for not doing that as well. But best practices, if it's something where we're talking about policy, it's always good to include the public when we can and when it's appropriate. All right, then what is a meeting? That seems super obvious, right? So the meeting is in person. This in 2016, electronic means seemed like more of a far-fetched idea even that late. But since COVID, we are all aware that a meeting done electronically is also a meeting. It does not have to be formal, it is also informal. For example, today is an open meeting because we invited counsel to come to this. We did not know if there would be a quorum. We reached out to board and commission chairs, co-chairs. We did not know if they'd extend that to their board and commission members. So in the event that we had a quorum of any governing body, we went ahead and just made this an open meeting. But this is definitely an informal meeting. We are not going to be following parliamentary procedure during this meeting. But how far does that stretch? So when you're looking at that, the biggest question I always get is can members get together socially? Yes, you absolutely can, but you can't discuss city business when you do that. So if your border commission wants to get together after your meeting, you all wanna go and get some dinner afterwards, that is totally fine. But while you're there, do not discuss boarding commission or other city business. Same thing if you guys are all happen to be up having dinner at the hipster. Does somebody have to get up and leave because we have a quorum at the hipster? No, you can all be in the same place at the same time. You can be at social events, you can all be at the Oktoberfest that's coming up, or any of our city events, fireworks and fireflies. Completely fine. The only stipulation is if you have a quorum of the members, you can't talk about city business. And so that's kind of why you'll notice when we have our council members do certain public things like their, their tons of them park. We rotate, number one, so that they don't all have to be up at farmer's market every Saturday. But also, because we don't wanna have a quorum up there while they're discussing city business, even though they may not be discussing together, that can help facilitate that without violating the open records tools. Can members email each other concerning governmental business? Okay, so this is one where I tend to get a lot of pushback on. Best practices, do not do group emails with your board, commission, or council. Just don't. Because if you start discussing city business, then you have a virtual meeting. And that is a violation. So you can have a virtual meeting, even if it's not like a Zoom meeting or a phone conference meeting. You can do that by email if you all start emailing back and forth. And the reason for that is we want those public discussions. The, the public has a right to hear how you're deliberating, what you're deliberating, and kind of have an insight into how decisions are being made. They can't do that if we put it all in email. So just in general, my typical best practices rule of thumb is don't do group emails. Now, if you're not discussing city policy, or if it's a shared information situation, for example, there are times where city staff will email information out to all of council. We share the agenda with them, we share our memos. I mean, those get posted, but do those go out by email as well, Rachel? The agenda packets, or they just post it online? Okay. But in a lot of cities, you'll, you'll get those emails. Or if we have to supplement one of those memos, we'll send that out by email. That is just sharing of information. Now, if everybody starts replying to all and we get a conversation going, then we have a problem. So in general, my recommendation is generally just don't do it. Because if you cross that line, you may not realize you're crossing it until you're way across it. Okay, so these are their best practices. Again, save the discussion and opinion of any subject for open meetings. So a lot of people think that maybe there's conversation that goes on behind the scenes, like that boards and commissioners or council members are talking about, well, I'm gonna vote this way, how are you gonna vote? That is absolutely a violation, and that's been in all of my trainings, we don't do that. So that would fall under the opinion. Your emails are a public record. So if you are emailing each other and those records are requested, they will be shared with the public. And if you are violating the open meetings policy, that will likely result in a complaint. So again, just don't do it. There are, since this time, there have been some additional case law. The, the proposed legislation about walking quorums has not come to fruition in the way that it was suspected in 2016 it would. But it keeps coming back. And case law indicates that it would be a violation. What a walking quorum is, is rather than doing that reply all, if I'm on a border commission with Rachel and Jenna, and say we're a quorum, it's small board, so three is quorum, and I email Rachel and say, hey, here's what I'm gonna do, what are you gonna do? And then she emails me back, and then I email Jenna and say, hey, here's what Rachel's gonna do, what are you gonna do? And we kind of keep that going, sort of like the kids game of telephone, where you whisper, and then the next person, the next person, the next person. That would still constitute a violation. So just in general, be very careful about what you're emailing to your other board and commission members, other council members, staff. Again, it's a different thing, we are involved in the day-to-day operations. You are perfectly fine to email other staff about what you're doing and what you need to do. Okay, then this is a really big hot-button issue lately, which is do members of the public have a right to speak at an open meeting? Only if it's on the agenda or if the person in charge of the meeting allows. There is no absolute right to give input at a public meeting. On our council meetings, we do have public forum set aside on there, and people are allowed to speak during that time, members of the public. We have that instruction. There are cities that don't. I would say the majority in Iowa do, but it is not required. A lot of people wanna say it's my First Amendment right to speak at a public meeting. That is not true. You do have First Amendment rights, but we also have time, manner, and place restrictions that we are allowed to provide. A lot of boards and commissions probably don't have public forums on their agendas regularly because a lot of them are probably either discussing very specific topics where there may not be a lot of public participation, or we just in general, we have more public attending council meetings than most of our boards and commissions. That may not be true for all of them, but in my experience with most cities, that's been the case. With Marion specifically, if you want to include that public forum on your agenda for just in case, you can. Most people also have other, they have a section for other business, which we'll talk about later. And you can allow that. The only caveat that I would include is that when you have a public forum, there cannot be council discussion over topics that are not on the agenda, or commission discussion over topics that are not on the agenda. So when people come into council and they wanna talk about something that's not on the agenda, generally, generally, our response is to allow them to give that information. They can ask questions and get some information back, but council can't discuss or deliberate it at that time. So it's something that, that will typically either get direction to put it on a future agenda, or to have staff gather more information. And that's because as we get into the agenda portion of this training, you have to stick to that. And the reason is because the public has a right to know what we're gonna be talking at about at each meeting. And if we start going off that agenda, then they don't have the notice. And there may be somebody who really, really wants to come and speak on a topic. We have those certain topics that we know about, but sometimes we get the surprise ones too. So we have to give them fair notice of what we're going to be discussing. Okay, so here's where we talk about those agendas. So this is especially important for staff liaisons who do the agendas and minutes and things like that. Before the meeting, we have to have twenty-four hours with a date, time, and place, and a tentative agenda. That has to be posted twenty-four hours prior. There are some emergency situations, but those need to be like true emergencies and not like, oh, I forgot to put this on, and I'd really, really like to get it done, not an emergency. But there are some situations where we would have an emergency and we could add a last-minute agenda item. We try really hard not to do that. I think in my time of doing municipal law, I think I've approved it once where it actually went through, and maybe two other times where we ended up not adding it. Last minute, we found a different resolution. Notice of the meeting does need to be sent to any news organization or any members of the public that request it. It does have to be posted, physically posted at a prominent place accessible to the public. That is something where I think we post all of ours out here on the bulletin board for council. And I'm not sure about all the boards and commissions, but I think the ones that meet here do. I know we have some boards and commissions that don't meet here. Generally, you post it where the meeting will be held. And as far as what that access means for twenty-four hours, there has been case law. We have to post it twenty-four hours in advance, but it doesn't mean that that physical posting has to be accessible all twenty-four hours of that time. Ours is not, our doors get locked at night, people cannot come in here twenty-four hours. That would not be the most secure option for our building, but so long as it's posted out there twenty-four hours in advance, that's, that has us covered. In the last six years since this was done, at the time, it was email copies if they really requested. Most of us post our agendas through the portal. Does everybody know? Sorry, I should have asked that question before I got here, sorry. Since we've used the portal, they're automatically posted online, people can find them there. So there may be a few people who still ask for it by email, and if they do, we do have to send it to them. But since we have the portal, it's readily accessible online. And once people learn to use that, they're probably more likely to do that than to call us up every week and ask for it to be emailed. What needs to be included in the agenda? It would shock you to know how many places use the bare bones agenda of or used prior to all of the training and IPad becoming more of a common thing. The Iowa Public Information Board itself is relatively new. It started in the, I wanna say like maybe 2014, 15, maybe I shouldn't have taken out the history slides. But a lot of places did, and there's a few smaller places that still do on their agenda. They'll put approval of old minutes, old business, new business. That's not sufficient to tell the public what we're gonna be talking about. So nobody would have any idea if they are supposed to show up and talk about their particular topic of interest. Or they may not know they have an area of interest until it shows up on one of our agendas. So these are the, the most important guidelines. These came from the Iowa Supreme Court. There are certain circumstances where the tentative agenda is subject to change. In general, taking something off of the agenda is not a big deal because we can always just not have a motion, we can table things. So having it come off of the agenda or be postponed for a later date is not a big deal. It's the addition, that's a much bigger deal. We are allowed to put on emergency items, but generally, if it's possible to divert them, we do. And then what you put on your agenda needs to be sufficient to let the public know what you're talking about. So for example, if you are on historic preservation and you're talking about the church up here, and you just put the name of the church. But a couple months ago, we had proposed demolition. If somebody saw that and didn't know that there was proposed demolition, they might not know that they wanted to come and talk about that. They are a morning meeting, so there's probably some people that would hope not to come for that anyway. But that being said, if you put on their demolition of and you cite the church, people would have an idea of what you're talking about. Same thing, if you look at the council agendas, we spell out the resolution and generally what we're going to be talking about. There, our agendas are actually pretty detailed with regard to our business. Some of the boards and commissions I've sat in on, they are relatively general. That usually means it's just a broad discussion of that topic. But if you're looking at specific action being taken, and if you intend to take action at that meeting, I would advise that you put that specific action on the agenda. So we put our resolutions on the agenda. If you are looking at something where you're going to make recommendations, or P and Z has their resolutions that they put on their agenda, those are good things to have on there so that the public knows this isn't just, we're not just having a conversation, we're actually moving forward with something. Let's see here, oh. We also have to talk about any, not only do you have to include the issues you intend to talk about in open discussion, but you also have to include on your agenda any closed sessions that you are going to have. If you are going to have a closed session, I should know about it. And we'll get into that a little bit more after we go through minutes. So after the meeting, we do have to have the minutes, they need to show at a minimum, the date, time, place, and members present, and then any action that was taken at the meeting. So we do have to note individually how people voted. If all members present vote, it can be noted as unanimous. I think best practices is you have your form and you mark off who voted which way on each thing. If it's unanimous, it's pretty easy. Or however you generally do it, it's just best to note that specifically, just in case there's any confusion. We do have to publish our meetings, our minutes of our meetings as soon as they are complete. And we can make them available online. I believe most boards and commissions, and I know council does, we make them available on the portal. Best practices, we're in 2022, in 2016, it was a little bit harder. There's no reason not to do that now, once they're available, get them on there. Yes, sir?
Yeah, this is a question. So the boards, commissions, and committees that are forums have also published. Or is publication of minutes on the forums?
So really sad. We only do council meetings in the newspaper, but when I say publish, we have to make them available to the public. So as far as, I, I think probably prior to everything being available online, the only way for people to see minutes for a boarding commission was probably to come up here and see when they got published to our bulletin board. That was before I was doing anything up here, so I would have no idea how they did that before. But since I've been here, most of the minutes do appear online eventually. Yes, Tom? Yes, so. No, the requirement is just as soon as they're completed. And the issue there is that some boards and commissions did not, especially with COVID, didn't have a quorum for quite some time. And so they were unable to meet and get minutes approved. So that's been kind of a special circumstance, but I think now most of the boards and commissions are meeting relatively regularly. But that, I think that's actually, actually great. And I'm currently also doing a review of all of our policies. So that's probably a really good policy to have in places, how we post everything. And I think since we've gotten the portal, I think that's been easier. I know for council purposes, that's made a world of difference for what I do, and I hope it has for the, the boards and commissions as well. And at least as far as finding information about our boards and commissions, I think it's made it a lot more accessible to the public. But especially with having the memos linked. If I don't remember that, remind me. So the question is whether or not there's a specific order that you take the votes in when you do a roll call vote. There's nothing that we've adopted formally that I've ever seen. Now, as I'm doing the policy review, we do have some kind of ancient policies, but that's not one that I've seen. So I defer to Rachel, do we have anything in place that dictates?
I don't think we have any policies during council meetings. We don't have too many roll call votes, but I'll, I'll like go down the line of who I start with. I start with a different person each time so that the same person doesn't end the roll call vote. But I don't think we have any policy regarding that.
That may be something that if there's a particular issue, a border commission could have that rule and that's something that we can talk through. Eventually, we're going to be looking at all of the bylaws and everything for all the boards and commissions as well. Okay, so here's where we get into what's probably the most important part of this, because this is where people tend to get into a little bit of trouble. Not us luckily so far. But can secret or preliminary votes be taken? No, there cannot be any secret or preliminary votes. All votes have to be done in open session. So this includes anything that happens in closed session. You cannot take a vote in closed session. It also includes that whole polling of your fellow commission members online or via email via text. Again, I'll repeat, just don't do it. So closed sessions, not a lot of boards or commissions use closed sessions. They do come up. I have done them for a couple of our boards and commissions. They can only be held by vote in open session of two thirds of the members of the body or all members present. And only after citing one of the reasons enumerating in Iowa code. Not going to get into the specific code section because that's my job and you guys don't have to know that. Because our policy here is that the closed sessions are referred to me. I take a look at whether or not it's okay to have them. And then I either come to your closed session, which is absolutely best practices. And I believe that our policy says I should be at all of them. There are some exceptions out there where I I would not attend. But if I'm not there, you have to get a written statement from me that has to be read out loud at your meeting on the open record to show that you have my approval to go into closed session. Part of that is because this is a legal question. And and as far as I am aware, the only person who would not be violating an Iowa code provision, who can make that legal determination on our staff is me. We may have some boarding commission members who are licensed attorneys. Obviously, we have the mayor. But again, it has to be done by the city attorney. So if you are on a board and commission and you've got a family law attorney who is going to let you know whether or not you can go into closed session, they are not qualified. And that would be a violation of not only our policy, but you would risk being in violation of the open records laws. During closed sessions, you can only talk about the topics that are listed as the reason for going into closed session. So we can't say, hey, you know what? We are in a lawsuit with company B. We're going to go into litigation and while we're in there, let's also talk about all these other things under the sun because nobody can listen to those minutes. Well, guess what? Usually sooner or later, it becomes known that you're talking about things in closed session that you shouldn't be. And then those minutes, the recordings that we make are to listen to by the Iowa Public Information Board. We would have to turn those over for them to review if there was allegations that we violated. And again, you cannot take a vote in closed session. You can kind of have a discussion and see if there is kind of some direction that you would follow. But again, that's not a formal vote. So you just don't know ayes and nays or any other vote taking. And then sorry, the other exception to the recording, we do have to take detailed minutes and there has to be a recording. It can be a video recording or it can be an audio recording, but if you do a video recording, it must include audio. If there is a member who is absent, they can have access to the closed session, assuming it was a meeting they would have otherwise had access to. So if Will can't come to our closed session on Tuesday next week, but he needs to know what happened, he can get that recording from Rachel and he has the ability to listen to that. But can any citizen off the street come in and listen to that? No. There is no requirement to hold a closed session on any particular topic. So even though code allows for it, we can choose to discuss things in open session. Generally, that doesn't come up a lot. There are some situations where we may give a litigation update in open session. Even that generally we don't do if it's going to be any sort of litigation strategy, but there may be something where we mention. Oh, okay. So we have trial on this day. We have this or this or this. But there's very few situations where we're able to have a closed session that we don't go into said closed session for one reason or another. Moving on to the open records, this is probably the part where most of you are going to find the relevant provisions. So all government bodies, officials and employees are covered by chapter 22. Every body of government has a lawful custodian. We actually have a couple within the city. So our lawful custodian of the main city records is Rachel. Our lawful custodian of our police records is Nicole Eels. So we do have two different custodians. I don't know that anyone else has formally designated one. The library is working on improving their policy and their director will be their records custodian. What does a record mean? Again, this seemed like some really like groundbreaking area back in like the early 2010s. But now it's pretty well understood that a record is any documents, tapes. I don't know who has tapes, so this may be a little obsolete there. Any digital recordings, basically any file or any piece of paper that we can give someone that has that information. It does include your emails. It includes websites, blog posts. It includes text messages. So for those of you who have heard us say, don't use your personal emails, don't use your personal cell phones for city business. That's why. Because anybody can examine, photograph or copy public records without a charge if they are in our custody. If somebody wants to have a copy that they can take with them, then they have to pay for that. But we also can't say like, oh, well, we don't have access to that record because we give all of our emails to such and such technology company. They are offsite and and we can't get them back. We are not allowed to do that. There are some exceptions there that would apply to some of the things that Terrell does, but with our data processing software and some of the geographical computer databases, I'm going to be really honest, I don't totally know what that means. So I would defer to Terrell on that. I've never had that come up. Yes, Lucas? So that will be coming up. We'll get into some of those. We'll get into the confidential information records coming up. And I think that's probably the number one thing that everybody comes to this training for. And just so you guys know, we are like on pace to completely bust my record for timing on this training. So so first of all, they're going to save that what's accessible for last because that's the the big topic. When do we have to make them available? We don't have to let people come in and examine our records. If somebody's like, well, I work during the day. I want to come in and look at it, but I don't want to make a copy because I don't want to pay for it. We don't have to say, okay, Rachel, you're going to meet this person when they get off their shift at 10 o'clock at night. We can limit it to our regular business hours. And Rachel does not have to come in on any of our holidays to show people documents either. Most people do not request to come in and look at them. Most people ask for copies. Most people actually prefer that we give them electronic copies now. Confidential records. What is confidential? Okay, so there is a list of about 74 items that are confidential or types of records. We're not going to go through all of those because a lot of them don't even apply to city. A lot of them relate to medical documents. A lot of them relate to school documents. But the biggest ones here are things like trade secrets. So sometimes we have contracts with other entities and they may have some technology that they use, or they may have something very specific to their field. That can also include billing and pricing, and we redact that when we give that to councils that we're not providing that public information. Any of my work product is that relates to litigation is confidential. That is incredibly important because if we are discussing a matter that may go to court, we don't want to show our hand to the other side. And also I need you guys to be able to come to me and talk to me with that confidence understood the same as you would if if it was a private matter. This is one that has probably the most question around it, which is peace officers investigative reports, except for date, time, specific location, immediate facts and circumstances. The big question right now is whether or not body cam footage is part of a peace officers investigative report. There are two cases out there right now. One is a Cedar Rapids case and the other one I believe is in the fifth judicial district. So it's not us. One says, yep, they are. The other says, nope, probably not. But here's the test. So there's a balancing test that we apply to that. And essentially what it comes down to for the most part in terms of our city is whether or not the public interest outweighs the damage that would occur by not releasing that. We also don't release those when it's a pending investigation. There are some ways to get around that. For example, if it's a matter that's being litigated, we may get a subpoena. If you get a subpoena that comes across your desk, somebody emails it to you, immediately send that to Rachel or to me. Appraisal information. So we go into closed session to talk about real estate transactions. That is one where that's a closed session, but as soon as that transaction is done, those minutes and records are open to the public. But we can go into closed session because you don't want to have your negotiations out in the open either. That kind of defeats the entire negotiation purpose. Appraisals, once the project is announced, then we have to start doing those types of things. But when we're just in the planning and negotiation stages, we don't have to release those. Then here's where HR comes in, Lucas. There is only certain personal information that that is in your personnel files that has to be released. I'm sure you are all aware, if you are on city staff, that your salary is public knowledge. So people get that information. They are allowed to have our contact information. There's just, there's things that they are allowed to have. It's enumerated. There are things that people typically are concerned about. For example, disciplinary files, those are generally not disclosed unless there is a like demotion or if somebody is terminated and then it's just a very general statement that gets released. So Lucas, we can go over some of that in more detail, or if you have a concern about what might be in your file that would be released, just generally. Generally, what ends up being requested are things like names, positions, salary, dates of employment, and those are all discoverable. Then there's some other things that if we release certain information, we would lose federal funding. I've never had that come up, but it could. And then the other thing that comes in a lot, and this is going to be probably most relevant for police and for building inspections, is information that's not required by law submitted from somebody outside of the government, so like a citizen. And if that information would be made public, it would lead to people not wanting to call it in. So if we have somebody call in and say they're like doing something terrible to the water supply. Todd does not have to say who turned that person in because we want people to make those calls. We want neighbors to call if there is a child endangered next door to them. But they might not want that information released because they would not want retaliation. Same thing when neighbors call in because they're their next door neighbor is violating the city building code or or property maintenance code. Sometimes you don't want to start a neighborhood war, so that is allowed to be kept confidential. Generally, what happens with those is we do let people know the general content of the complaint, but we redact the identifying information. When possible. So this is the part that is required for employees and that is what I just said, there is compensation that does include your entire compensation. Dates, position held, educational background, previous employment. And if you are terminated or demoted as a result of a disciplinary action, that is included. It doesn't say demoted here, but it is in the code. There are some big other exceptions like IT. There's a lot of what you do that we don't disclose because we don't want to be a target for hackers or ransomware, things like that. A lot of police procedures. The discussions surrounding those, if we have a security measure for this building or for any of our buildings, we don't make that public because we have an interest in physical security as well. There is also a rule in there that the courts can require us to release public information. Generally, what happens when that occurs is like, say, I get a subpoena for something that would generally be confidential information. I will then request the other attorney to get a protective order stating that they won't release it outside of that court case. So it will remain confidential with the exception of the people involved directly in that lawsuit. And that frequently can mean that it can't be released to the parties, but only to their attorneys. So for whatever that's worth to make you feel better about any confidential information we provide via subpoena, there you go. If there is a legal dispute. We do, this is, this is one that's important as well. Sometimes when we have a settlement in a lawsuit, there are multiple parties involved and they want to preserve their confidentiality, but any settlement that we sign off on is a public record. So even though pending litigation is confidential, finalized litigation, not so much. The thing about that, though, is once you file it with the court, you can go online and you can find that information anyway. So that's kind of one that over the course of time has become a lot less, a lot less important. So the other thing that has come up a couple of times is this next one, which is draft material. So if there is a draft record that has not been provided, like say you are working on a draft report for your border commission. You do not have to provide the draft. You only have to provide the final document. And I think the most important thing for all of these is if you are not sure if it's a public record, do not hesitate to reach out to me or to reach out to Rachel. It's our job to know all these details. I think the most important thing for all of you to know is that what happens when somebody calls in and asks you for something? What happens when somebody emails you and asks for something? And that's, that's all things that we have an open record or open records policy that it should spell that out. We cannot require people to fill out a form. We cannot require people to submit their request in writing. We cannot request that they give us specific parameters, although we can ask for those things. We just can't require them. That being said, if they don't put it within certain parameters, I think we've gotten some before where people request, I would like all emails that ever mentioned the airport. Okay, sure, except you're going to have to pay for that. So here's a few suggestions for narrowing that down. Is there, is there any specific topic related to the airport? We can ask for those things, but if somebody really wants every single email related to the airport, we're, we're going to start working on it. So in general, like the the other big question is one that's up there right now is how much time do we have? We do have a time limit. We do have to make our first contact and response within 10 days. So what that means is we have to let them know within 10 days that we, here's your request, we received it and we are working on it. It does not mean that we have 10 days to get them all of the items that they need. Otherwise, we would need about five more of Rachel just to handle like regular request processing, if not more. And then after that, it's a good faith timeline. You will see online lots of talk about cannot exceed 20 calendar days. There is some leeway in there for some room if it's a particularly big request. Additionally, sometimes I have to look through all those requests. And so not only do we have Rachel who has to look through them, but I have to look through them as well. If it's something that you know is routine. So if somebody, Nicole, if somebody contacts you and says, hey, I would like to know what the zoning code is for this particular thing. And you want to email them back with our zoning code, our code is public record. You can do that. If you're not sure, contact us. And in general, any major request should just be forwarded to Rachel right away. Or if it's a police record to Nicole. This is not really relevant anymore because we already do that. Fees, this is a big one. We are allowed to charge reasonable fees for our records requests. So it seems completely unfair that one person can call in and take up 20 million years of Rachel's time or 20 million years of my time, and that's a taxpayer burden. So the code currently allows us to charge that time back. So the most common charges for that are Rachel's and Nicole's time. And after that, Terrell's time is billed out at his hourly rate. My time is billed out at my hourly rate. And that's something that we do expect them to pay. We can charge a deposit ahead of time. And then they have to pay the remaining fee before we release the records. So if you are ever called upon in your specialization to provide those records, we will also charge your hourly time for that. The only thing with that is that the code has recently changed and we do have to provide 30 minutes free at the beginning. We already talked about that. We already talked about that. So this just talks about the policy. We just approved that policy. I have one, like I said, is, is on the docket for the library. I'm working on updating one for the police department, and I will be working on one for the fire department as well. Just because those, those particular departments tend to kind of keep their own records. And additionally, they tend to have some special things like fire has to deal with HIPAA. The library has some special regulations involving confidentiality of, of patron records. And PD just has an overwhelming amount of requests and a lot of exceptions. Penalties, what happens if we mess this up? That's, that's the bad news. So if you are on a border commission and you are found to have violated the open records and say they decide it's not, not a knowing violation, you're looking at a personal fee, not a fee to the city of Marion, but you personally will have a damage fee in the amount of $100 and $500. The board or the board members can also be ordered to pay costs and attorney's fees for the other side. There's also the potential to have removal from office. That tends to happen more in a court case. The Iowa Public Information Board does not necessarily have all of those powers. If you are found to have knowingly participated in a violation, that damage goes up to between 1,000 and 2,500. So the good news is I'm in-house. So if you have a question about whether or not you can have a closed session, if you have a question about whether or not your agenda is sufficient, if you have a question about whether or not a record can be released, send it to me. Because even though ignorance is in a defense to your violation, if you rely on me, you're in the clear. So that is a complete defense on your end. Say attorney said I could do this. So lucky for you, I will take that burden. If you don't like my answer, you can call the Iowa Public Information Board. They are incredibly helpful. It is a free resource. They don't charge anything. They do keep a record of all of their calls and emails. So occasionally we will have a member of the public who calls in and says, I talked to the Iowa Public Information Board and they said, you have to give this to me right now and blah, 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 you don't, you can't charge me money. And so I will on those occasions then call the Iowa Public Information Board and say, hey, we got this call from a member of the public who said you told them this. And there was like, I have no idea who that person is. I've only had them actually know who the person is one time. And they're like, that is not what we said. So I do, I do check up on those. This is just more information about the Iowa Public Information Board. If you would like that information, you can go to their website, but I don't think anybody's here today because they're looking for that information. Here's some more information and resources. If you would like to reach out to any of these resources, you certainly can. But again, your other option is to contact me or to contact Rachel. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. Sometimes we have to look at them and this is an area where every so many years, there's new legislation introduced, there's new case law. So typically, just in general, to remember that if you're not sure, reach out to one of us or the Iowa Public Information Board, that's going to be your best bet. Does anybody have any questions? All right, Tom? This is being recorded and we did invite all of the the boarding commission chairs and vice chairs to attend this. If they cannot, the recording will be available for them. And I am going to some of the board and commissions that have some certain little nuances. I'm going to go to those. So if you are a chair or a co-chair and you think it would benefit your border commission to hear this directly from me, sometimes people take the information more to heart when I come and say it to them directly. So if you are in a group that needs that, just reach out to me and I'm more than happy to come in and talk to your group. And I promise I won't wear my mean face unless I have to. Anything else? Well, we just beat my other time by an hour. So congratulations. If anybody who is watching this has any specific questions and you don't want to ask them via Zoom, you can always email Rachel and I. We're more than happy to answer your questions. Thank you. Oh. Are there any that you think would be helpful for the group? Okay, well, granted, I'll block off a couple of hours for you. All right, you, you guys are dismissed.